The order will always be started on the question.
Do you want to start, sir?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. How are you? How's the injury? Are you 100% now?
About 99.
99, that's great. Okay. Did you have a chance to take a look at the minutes from May the 24th? Anybody have any corrections, additions, or changes? No?
Moved to a minute.
Moved by Smith. Seconded by Garrett. Those in favor? Okay. The Board of Public Works and Safety Minutes for the 5th of the 19th year packets for information purposes. We have no communications tonight, no public hearing, no old business. New business, I'm going to slip right down to you, Monica. You're here regarding the fireworks, right?
Yes, sir.
Monica, you want to give us your pitch tonight?
Although much of the pitch there is, as usual, I don't, when I start coordinating, I don't want to interfere with Akron. Akron's, the town of Akron's birthday is on the 4th. So we either do it the day before, the day after, depending how it falls on the weekend. So this year it's on the 3rd. The same fireworks company that sets off the Rochester fireworks is the same company that sets off Akron's. So they can't be two places at once anyway. So the only difference, the only thing that's different from before is, as everything else, they've raised the rate. So the rate for fireworks went from 10,000 to 13,000 this year.
I saw that. I saw that from what they were submitting. So first, business, you're going to have the fireworks, you're asking for the fireworks on the 3rd, right?
Yes.
Sunday, the 3rd?
Yes.
Anybody see any issues with that? Okay. Okay. We normally budget, we have $5,000 we budget for the fireworks. I know the situation you're in. I would like to suggest, counsel folks, that I relinquish $1,000 from the Mayor's promotional fund to supplement their situation.
We appreciate that.
So if you get six, we'll have you on.
That certainly would help, yes.
Anybody have an issue with that? I'm not, you know, that fund, I don't, I don't normally deplete that. Shaw, we've got it.
Do we need to vote on that?
Please, would you like that? I'll make a motion. Wilson makes the motion.
Is that also including, excuse me, is that also is including the 5,000 plus your pound?
Yes, yes, be a total of six.
Total of six, yes, I'll second.
Those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, man. Get 100%, will you?
Thanks. The staples are gone now.
Good, very good.
And before you move on, Mayor, just when you send us the email requesting, just change it from 5,000 to 6,000.
Yes.
And then we have the girls, do you need that before the 4th? When do you normally pay them?
I pay them the day after.
The day after?
Well, so in this case, I will probably be paying them on like the 5th or the 6th.
Okay, because if you can give me the letter requesting the funding for tomorrow, I can include it in this week's claims, otherwise it would be two weeks.
I'll get it tomorrow.
Okay, then just drop it off at the front desk and they'll care and get that process for you.
Thank you.
Monica, refresh my memory, where do they come from?
Edwardsburg, Michigan.
Wow. Okay.
So they go, they, you know, load up all their stuff and come down here, either the day before, the day after, and then the next day they go to Akron or twice or something. So they don't make two trips from Edwardsburg back and forth.
Sure. Well, again, thank you for your efforts on this. It's been great, you know, things have just gotten great with the Legion taking that task over a couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a rainy day fund used community crossing grant match that Shaw wants, we voted on this with our, originally, but she wants clarification on the ARPA funds.
No.
This isn't the ARPA fund?
This is different, no.
Okay, where's the ARPA fund?
That's down under the resolutions.
Oh, that's in the resolutions?
Yes.
Okay, what is it?
This is for our, we've got a, we were awarded a million dollar community crossings grant for Main Street Stormwater. What I would like is, I need to document in the minutes, I would like to take the match, which will be 250,000, out of our rainy day fund because it's a 25/75. So rather than me trying to piecemeal multiple funds together to come up with that match, I'd like for the council to allow me to just take that match right out on rainy day and we call it done, easy peasy.
We're good in rainy day?
Six and four, how much do we have?
Well, I said we're good in the, the total amount would be nice enough, too.
Yeah, 661,000 right now, because I haven't transferred anything over to it just because of all the projects.
We're going to use this, just fine.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Has it rained recently?
I know, right? So maybe if we use it, it'll rain. I just need a motion so I could document it in the minutes.
I'll make a motion. I was going to make a motion, I'll second.
Thank you.
Those in favor? I got it. Okay, we have Annabelle Yoder here to speak to our ordinance concerning semi tractor trailers parking on the side streets.
I guess I just have a couple of questions. My fiance drives semi truck. We were informed probably 14 days ago or so that we're not allowed to, he's not allowed to currently park it at our resident. We live on 1630 Bancroft. I guess I was unaware, we were unaware of this, we've been doing it for a while, and especially with the cost of fuel right now, he does not feel safe leaving it at the truck stop, which was requested, and I understand that. In a normal circumstance, we don't have a problem with that. I guess I would just like to know if there's any way we can revise it to maybe allow them to park at home for their 14 hour that they are required to have off every day for safe driving, and then they also are required to have a 32 hour break over the weekends. It would be nice if maybe with, like I said, the circumstances right now, with fuel being the cost that it is, people are trying to take it, I mean, honestly. Maybe they're.
They aren't securing a lot out there.
I mean, I guess there's been a couple incidents from what I understand. I can understand, you can't catch everybody, stuff's going to happen, it is what it is. I guess we were just asking for maybe a revision of some of the requirements or guidelines, regulations, whatnot.
Did you get a copy of the ordinance?
Um, no, I didn't. No, we had, I, so I can't think who the officer was. Okay, do you have?
That's your copy, keep it.
Okay, awesome.
And just for your guys' information, this ordinance has been on the books forever since I've been here, I don't know.
I think it was codified in 707.
73.
So when we actually started.
Wow.
So it's always been there.
Yeah.
We've kind of overlooked it, we've never really enforced it in the past several years here within the last couple of months. It was asked that we start enforcing it, so we are. There've been you, there are two on Fulton.
Yeah.
There might, there might be four.
What happens, you know, unfortunately, yeah, it has been on the books a long time and it's been hit and misses to the application of it, and we start getting complaints.
Yeah.
And then you've got the law on the books and you're not.
And I understand.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You're not following through with the law.
Absolutely.
And everyone that we've talked to, and I think, I think we talked to your husband as?
It's my fiance, yeah, Robert Easterday.
We try to be as accommodating as we can, the others have asked, hey, can I bring home once a month to clean it up or wash it or something?
Yeah.
We're fine with that. But the problem is when we have to enforce it, for one, we have to enforce it for every other.
Yeah, I understand.
And please don't, you know, we're not trying to pick on you.
Oh, no, 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 I, that's why I came up.
And we're not trying to create inconveniences because I know it can be a hardship, but.
Yes, yeah.
I've included the ordinance in the back of your packet so you have it, you know, look over it and read it.
And also one of the main regions, which I've called in a few times to Chief Butler, because emergency vehicles and the fire trucks have to get down those narrow streets.
Exactly.
And the larger the vehicle you put out there, the streets aren't very wide.
Yeah.
And you've got to be able to get emergency vehicle.
Yeah, and we have ours pulled off, it's off of the road in a concrete driveway back, at least 20 feet off of the road, so it's not in the road or anything like that. I don't know if we could talk about maybe putting it so far off of a distance off of the road, you know?
Any revisions would have to be up to the council.
Okay, well, and I don't know what I need to do, or I guess this is just my first step. I'm by no means.
Are you saying you park it off the street?
Yes, we park it off the street, about 20 feet.
Does that comply with?
It's still driving a semi in a residential area.
You're right.
You have to get.
And that's where it's.
And I think a lot of it was because of the wear and tear of the heavy trucks on the side streets.
And I can understand that as well.
I think that's where a lot of that probably came from, especially back in the 70s. Whether you guys want to revisit it or not, it's up to you. But yeah, I will say, they park it off the street, but you're still driving it in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, we keep it clean.
And it's specific to.
Well, as I said, some nights they drive on the city streets, and we see them on 8th Street coming by our place all the time.
Well, if they're making deliveries to and from, that's fine.
Yeah.
And it's pointed out.
They can make deliveries to and from, a business. Well, I mean, semis go down 18th Street all the time, going to La Moose and.
Except on state highways or state controlled highways, it shall be unlawful for any person to operate a commercial vehicle with a gross weight in excess of 10,000 pounds in any residential district, provided however that this prohibition shall not apply to such a vehicle when it is making a delivery from a state or state controlled highway and returning to it by the most direct route possible. And in the event that this restriction results in any undue hardship or unfair competition, the chief of police shall have the power to authorize the issuance of special permits from time to time as deemed necessary for the protection of the rights of any individual. Past November 27, 1973.
So Attorney Perkins, does that mean that the chief could issue a permit to allow this particular situation to park in their, on their own property?
I don't think, in my opinion, inconvenience isn't a hardship. I think what I heard, what I heard was if it were a situation of unfair competition, like you had, you had one, one that was, had to be moved, you had a competitor across the street, if that's where a heavy delivery truck or something, and he had to park his, and that might be a situation, I think you'd have to fit it under one of those. I think that, it sounds like that's where that's, what that's intended for.
Okay. I know one of the, one of the instances, and I don't believe it's yours, that was brought to us, had to do with visibility on the street, you know, pulling out from another.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It takes up a lot of room.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, and that's why, you know, I said, we wouldn't park it if we didn't have the means to put it 20, 30 feet off of the road, so it's not in traffic, you know, anybody can get through. We are the first, second house off of 18th Street on Bancroft, so it's not that we're, you know, far, you know, can't make special.
You can make arguments both ways.
I agree, I agree.
Because they make the roads better than they did in the 70s, probably.
Yeah, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not asking for trouble, I just.
No, you're doing the right thing by coming to talk to them, absolutely.
You're Annabelle?
Yes, sir.
You've presented your position very eloquently.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you've done a nice, nice job presenting.
Thank you.
I don't know that we can do you a lot of good, but you've done a nice job presenting your situation.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Is there any chance that property borders a district that's not a residential district?
Um, our property.
It is a residential district.
Actually, our property butts up to the water station right there on Bancroft by the swamp on the backside of Columbia.
The lift station. Yeah, the only other thought I had was she could, maybe they could go to the plane commission and ask.
Resume?
That it be resumed into the neighboring district and then it wouldn't apply because it's not a resident. I don't know if they do that, but.
I don't know, it's, I mean, it's residential all the way around.
Okay.
You know, on 18th Street.
Yeah, I think we're the only work if it.
Yeah. Okay.
The only other, the only thought I had, too, was if there was a property available that all of you guys could go together and purchase that you could secure.
Yeah.
For, I mean, if you all know each other.
Exactly.
Since like Andy said, there's four, five in town.
Yeah.
Or something that you guys could, and then you guys could secure it, that would, you know, one location, everybody parks.
Well, see, I mean, we're, a lot, I'm, sorry, no, a lot of them were using the McDonald's, you know, and, and I get that, that was nice because we knew it was a lot of the local guys and whatnot. We're having a lot of out of towners, where as you do with the pilot, and then they got the new owners and they said that they wouldn't allow that anymore, so now they've all moved down to the pilot, which I understand also, but it just kind of put them all in a tough spot, sometimes it's hard to get in there, a lot of the trucks are parked for the night at 6, 7 o'clock at night. My fiance, he works, usually leaves on a Sunday in the evening, and he'll be home Friday evening, so he's only home his 36 hours or whatnot, 36 to 48 hours, so it just happened to be right time of day, I guess somebody saw it, so it is what it is, I just wanted to state our concerns and our case.
Is there anything?
Thank you, but I think that's probably about all we can do at this time.
Is there anything with plane commission you guys can discuss for it?
Yeah, we might, might be able to, I think.
And you guys are local county.
Right. I mean, probably requested to be changed, because it seems like it, I don't know, you know, if you're off the street, I don't see why it's such a big deal, if you're totally off the street. I mean, I remember over on 10th Street, growing up, somebody was a truck driver, was a pain in the ass in the winter time, and we were.
That's a lot of it.
Those of you in TV land, that's a technical term.
Oh, sorry. I am getting woke up in the winter time.
From the truck driver, you know, because the truck can't shut off.
I agree.
That's a huge door deal in residence.
And I get that, I get that.
And those are complaints that we've had in the past where in the winter time days if the truck ran because it was too cold and bothered the neighbors right next door in the truck.
Which that I understand as well, it's just like a barking dog or something, I mean, I got those too, not mine, though. What do I do about that?
Paul's.
Brilliant.
We'll put you on the agenda again. Take care of those two, yeah.
I'll get on the agenda for that.
Okay, well, thank you.
I appreciate your time and listening to me.
Well, again, we get a lot of people make presentations, you've done a nice job.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time again, thanks.
Okay, that takes us down to the ordinance resolutions. We're looking at resolution, and this is the one I was thinking about, 07-2022. Addendum for ordinance 07-2021, the ARPA, the ARP Fund Spending Plan. Shaw, would you like to bring us up to speed on that?
Yes. If you recall, of the multiple conversations we had about ARPA funds, that we established the fund, we established all the requirements we needed to, the only thing we didn't do was actually put our spending plan in a formal resolution or ordinance, which is required before I can actually disburse any money. So.
What we did was pretty informal.
Yeah, I mean, it was approved at the council, I have it documented in the minutes, you guys approved what we were going to spend it on, but per the Treasury's guidelines, we have to have it more formalized. So all I did was, I apologize, did not run it past you, but I typed up the resolution referencing back to the, our ordinance that we created the fund, the ARP fund, and just documented that you guys approved the 50,000 for the health department, that you approved up to 300,000 for the water department for the water main extensions, and then the remaining was going towards our stormwater project. So that was just how I worded it, what has already been discussed and approved, it was all going towards utilities to save on having to jump through any additional hoops, or it was pretty simple and cut and dried. So if I just put it in a resolution, and then that'll make the feds happy and it'll make our financial advisors happy as well. So that's it in a nutshell.
Did we get a sign off on that?
Yes, because it's actually a resolution, so, yeah.
Could I have a motion for the first, for the reading of Resolution 07-2022?
Thank you.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Wilson, those in favor for the reading of the resolution? Okay. Marty, do you have the resolution?
Did I say in its entirety?
Do you have a?
I think I said in title only, Marty.
Oh, I think I heard that.
I thought I did.
Didn't that matter to me? I don't care.
That's okay, in title only, everybody?
And, you know, if you recall, you really don't have to read the resolution, you just hold on it. Ordinance that you have to read, correct, Attorney Perkins?
Resolution that we'll read once.
You don't have to read it, though. You can reference it by number and move your pass if you want.
Wouldn't it be nice for the public to know what we're, what we're doing?
It's a different.
Yeah, I know. 5,000 feet, you know, okay. Go ahead, Marty.
What am I doing?
Well, I think we had a motion to read the resolution by title only.
Okay. A resolution adding an addendum to ordinance 07-2021, ARP Fiscal Recovery Fund Uses Plan.
Motion to approve Resolution 7-2021, moved by Wilson.
John raised his hand.
Seconded, those in favor? Okay, that's the motion, passes. Thank you. We have several of our chiefs and superintendents out on duties tonight. Marcus back here?
Nope.
No, I'm the only one that didn't get the memo.
He's actually.
Well, we always like.
You seem to do that, Andy.
We always like to have you here because you're the one that has a gun. Okay, so Fire Chief Butler's is, he's, he's had a day off today. Chief Shaw, would you like to give us your report?
Certainly. For the month of May, there were 27 accidents, we issued 113 total warnings, 59 of those were for city ordinance, 60 total offenses, 51 case reports, 687 calls for service, 32 lockouts, five towed vehicles, 33 people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that those people were lodged for. Other than that, Brady Briggs is still in the academy, will graduate, I believe, August 18th, and then Bryce Michael, our newest hire, will go to the academy on August 29th. So we'll be getting one back, we'll be losing one. Fairly short order there. We're still trying to hire one to replace one of the, if you remember, we lost two, Logan's Ford, we hired Bryce, we're still trying to hire one, we had the process, we couldn't get anyone. So we're going through another hiring process, applications were due, I think last Friday, or week to go Friday, we're going to have applicant testing on July 9th, so we'll see how that goes. We've got six people that turned in applications, so we'll see how it goes. Other than that, that's about all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
Questions for the chief? Thanks for being here tonight, Andy.
Yeah, anytime.
Okay. Dwayne is tied up in some things, too, so he cannot be here, but let me give you a quick update. Those of you who've been in project, we have about 16 projects on the whiteboard, and either Dwayne, Marcus, or Derek are actively involved, and someone are in those projects. See, Marvin Davis is here tonight from the water board, right, Marvin? You're back there in the shadows? Yeah. Got a project starting there very, very shortly to loop the water main out to the Deer Run Edition east of Vesper Park Road, and that's something that's been needed for some time. We're going to use some of the ARPA funds to complete that. That project was bid in TGV out of Ishawaka, was a successful bidder last, this last week, so things will be moving on that pretty quickly. We've started the Minno Creek revamping project on the east side of town through the city limits. Three of those huge pipes have already started to be used in culvert areas that we needed to replace piping, just dredging, getting Minno Creek in order. Did you see those pipes out there along by the fairgrounds of Route? Those things are bigger than this room. Two of them are already in place. Our folks working in combination with the county, their street department, the county, been whipping it out like crazy. 6th Street, oh, just finished, and then the street's back open. 3rd Street is just finished, and they'll have one more at Riddle School that they will be all putting in place here very shortly. They're moving along, doing, doing some good stuff. Our engineering firm is moving ahead expeditiously with the downtown project, community crossing project, where we're revamping storm sewers and repaving Main Street. It will be all the way from Monticello Road up to 8th Street when it's completed, and it'll all look men like the end on paving project that was done this last year with the 14 and 31, old 31, or Main Street going, going south. So that, that's in the works, should be ready to bid the first phase of that, which is 6th Street to Monticello Road, then a few couple weeks. So we'll be hearing more about that as we progress, and we want to do it in phases for a couple of reasons. We've got the million dollar grant for the first phase, and the community crossing folks will believe will certainly be interested in our plan for completing the thing with the second grade as well. So that was the reason for breaking it up into two chunks, one thing, the other thing was, you don't do something like that just overnight, we don't want to disrupt the whole downtown when we're looking at Chili Cook Off in October on the car show, you know, we want them to be able to come, stop at 6th Street, so, and that's all been planned out with the folks, the car club and the chambers, we're all, we're all in sync there. There will be some detours and such, traffic through that process, and Chief Shaw's, Chief Butler are actively involved, working with our engineering firm, folks in the, in the contractors that would be picked to make sure we do that without too much difficulty at the brakes. The waste treatment project, Marcus's project, where we're upgrading the waste treatment plant to the tune of seven and a half million dollars, the SRF loan, that's coming along fine, the damp charge we had, that we work off of, we have that project rolling into nine categories of upgrade and repair, and everything's put on the schedule and calendar wise, we meet once a month with the Crosby Construction folks and the Commonwealth folks and go over that schedule and make sure any bottlenecks we're working through together so everybody's on the same page. sure any bottlenecks we're working through together, so everybody's on the same page. And as you might imagine, some of the bottlenecks have been materials. It's kind of a crazy world right now, but we are, at this point, we're in pretty decent shape, and we're moving forward with that. Of the nine categories, five of them have been, we got four others to wrap up, and look to have that all wrapped up. The goal is, in November, have that finished, and then we will have a waste treatment plant is upgraded and running for a very long time.
Well, the scope of all that change, I mean, part of having material shortage is also increased cost of material?
Yeah.
Are we going to see some diminished scope of the whiteboard?
Part of sitting down and having these construction meetings, you know, I came from the world of management by objective and working under the principles of folks like Ellie Goldratt, who was the father of projects and constraints, you know? Called them herpes, and we run into a lot of that. And part of our meetings are, we lay the herpes out in front of everybody and work through how we can mitigate any additional costs, maybe redirect how we, how we finish the project. And we've done, we've done quite a little bit of that. So the cost, the additional cost, we try to keep that at minimum, because, you know, the state revolving fund folks only want a loan fund once, so we try to work that out. And in some of the things that we change, or we take a look at, take it in a different direction, will actually bring a credit then back to us, because we're not doing this, but we're doing this, which is going to be perfectly okay according to engineers and construction folks. So, yeah, it's, these are not average times, and if you go about it like this, you're not going to be able to do these things, and you're going to end up spending a whole bunch of money. And then we push back. I mean, there are people involved at times that, well, let's just say it, they're trying to take advantage of the situation, and we push back. So anyway, that's, that's where we are with some of the major projects going on. So when you see these guys out doing this, or doing that, or they're not, well, the car show folks are surprised already.
Apologize to Mr. Mayor.
That's all right. When you see these guys out doing whatever, they're, they're pretty busy right now. Of course, a couple of things that you have seen that we haven't talked about, sometimes this splash pad is now in operation, and that's, that's, that's crazy. It's being utilized to the nth degree, and has turned out to be a really good thing. There have been some bugs with it. It is highly computerized, and, you know, sometimes an on-off switch is better than all of the other space. Because, okay, so we've had a couple of bugs that we've had to work out with the manufacturer installer, but that's, that's going pretty well. The new pool management is doing very well. My gosh, shot at how many people have gone through the pool today, it's a bunch.
I, I don't honestly know the number off the top of my head. I know any, all the days that have been above 80 degrees and sunny, I think they've been maxed, as they admit they're 300 and, Marvin? Well, you were in one of those conversations, 310?
I think it's 310 or 312.
312? That's what, 310 or 312 is the max, just because of lifeguard and safety, but every day that's been nice, I think we have maxed our, our just for-
Couple of those hot days in this, these, you know, Ethan Trotter, Megan McGlothlin, they're doing a great job of managing a pool. A couple of these hot days, driven up there to see how things are going, there'd be people lined up outside in line, and our folks be giving out water and whatever, while they're waiting on that one. Oh my God, I think we got a problem, what's going? No. With the lifeguards on duty, there's only X amount of people you can have in at one time, right?
Yep.
You can't pull everybody in there and just let them go. And our management was being very, very conscientious about that. And I walked up and I said to one of the dads, I said, "T, I'm sorry, you gotta wait." I said, "I know this is a..." And he said, "No. Thank you for having people who are that conscientious, who appreciate that." So, this is a lot of good things going on there, and we'll just keep on keeping on it. Hope Ethan comes back next year, I think he's planning on it, but we'll see.
I've heard different.
No, and Megan too, I haven't heard anything different. So we, we got the lifeguards all matching bathing suits this year, that says lifeguard across it, and they look very professional. The two pool managers have shirts that say pool, pool management, so nobody has any question when they walk in there, who's in charge? Okay. Okay, that's very quickly some of the things going on. I mean, the other projects are at different stages. Salt Barn, we're, we've got bids out for it right now, it's going to be built by the time one hits around here. We've got a meeting Thursday with the Republic landfill folks to talk about the leachate business that we've been handling, and the transmission line that we've talked about for some time, and put some ideas in place, and they want to, I think they want to get into that transmission line world as quickly as they can, because that's, that's money for them. And of course, they would pay for all of that, so we'll be having discussions with that Thursday. So, anyway, we got a, we got a busy schedule, a lot of things on the plate, but a lot of things are getting done. I, I keep telling the folks, I keep wanting to go in and take more off of that board as we go, but there always seems to be something to hit at the bottom, so. Any questions? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, reports of committees. We don't have Harry here tonight, we don't have David Hye here tonight. Ruth, how about the area plant commission, anyone to report?
Well, we work on a vote on changing the, is it, the houses out there that Doc Hop is building. He, he's ready to show some of them, and he'd like to, instead of having them apartment shoveling or duplexes, he wants to sell them as a condo kind of thing, so he needs to have that changed to allow ground and property sold.
Oh, I see.
And there weren't enough people there to vote, so we're doing a special meeting tomorrow night, so we can vote to say, yeah, you can sell them that way.
Maybe you don't, maybe you don't know this, but I mean, I've, I've seen those things, and they look like duplexes.
Yeah, they do.
They're two, two together. So he's wanting to break that up so that-
Yeah, the land. Right now, he's selling just the, just the building, but the land needs to go with it too.
Okay, I see.
Right? So, so you've got to have that worded differently.
Okay.
And then we have to approve the wording of it.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, and there wasn't a forum last night. Somebody said they were going to show up and did. You know, I could have done that to you.
I know you could have. But you see, I, you don't know, I've gotten in the habit of calling, you know?
So, so we have to have a special meeting. Other than that, they are done with the plan, the, is it city plan? That's all done, and she's ready to type it up, and we talked about that a little bit, and-
Boy, they're looking nice.
Yeah, yeah, it's very nice. And she wanted to explain some blank spots, so that in the future, those blank spots don't mean anything except for if something comes up, there's somewhere to put some more stuff in, because it's always changing. And the last appendix, she says, I'm going to leave that blank, just in case, is that okay? So, yeah, so she's-
Heather emailed the draft to me today, took forward to the council, so you all will have, have an opportunity to review it before the public hearing serves. So she just emailed it to me today.
And, and she says she's not going to read to it again. Okay. Now she doesn't mind revamping it and adding things, but, you know, the whole thing again, never, it took a little too long, you know?
Did you tell her you wrote that up in pencil?
Yeah. Well, COVID happened in the middle of that, so it did extend it and made it a little more difficult than, than what would have normally happened.
You know, all in all, those guys have done great.
Yeah.
Good job. Appreciate you attending those things.
Yeah, yeah, because we've talked about a lot of different things that they've changed, and everything that people have come in and on a regular basis say, do I really need to do that? And, and so there's been a lot of rewording to make it easier for people to do things in the area. So that, that's nice.
It's an interesting meeting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for Ruth? Fedco, Goodman's not here, I know they have completed their survey, consultant that they hired to go do a community survey and such. I'm not sure when the results of that will be let out, but I know that is completed. Redevelopment Commission meets tomorrow, and on the agenda is the, working through the completion of the nipple plate trail. And the, the USI folks will be here tomorrow.
I can't wait to hear that.
Yeah, they're, they're going to have their stuff together to show everybody, the group.
They're really kind of promising.
They're, you know, what you find out, if you've been in this job for a while, is everybody's out there that says engineering firm isn't necessarily who you need for your particular job. They all have their forte.
Right, right.
And the USI folks are, you know, roads and bridges and trails and stuff, they're not waste treatment plants, you know?
Right.
That kind of thing. And they do, they do a good job, and I think, yeah, they've given me a little bit of insight as to what they're bringing, and I think you're going to be pleased with it tomorrow. And I understand there's a conference call with the DNR tomorrow.
Good, good. Because, because the thing is, is to attach the nipple plate to the existing trail around the hospital, and, and that's the biggest issue. How do you get there without-
How do you get the way across a state highway?
Right. And, and so what would be ideal is there at the deli, at, you know, Townsend's, to go across there, because you can do the light, and pedestrians can do the light. So how do you get there? Well, if you go around the city streets, the back way, then there's plenty of light poles, trees, fire extinguishers, that's in the way to expand the sidewalk to make it a path, a bike path, or a walking path.
Well, and of course, their whole intention is to keep it as much of the trail as you can.
Right, right, because it has to be a trail.
Yeah.
So then, it's like, let's go down, let's go down Ninth Street and just go straight there. Well, that's a really good idea, but, but then you have all those poles and all those businesses and everything in the way. So that's the, that's, that was their biggest challenge, was to come up with really good financial idea on which direction we're going to go.
And of course, this has all started with a grant from the DNR, so they have to approve whatever you're going to do, and the farther you get away from the quote-unquote rail, trail.
Trail, right.
They don't like it, you know? So you ought to have an interesting conversation.
And, and a trail is not a concrete sidewalk, but it's not a sidewalk. It's, sidewalk is not a trail.
Right.
And it's minimum of 10 feet.
Minimum, yeah, yeah, minimum of 10 feet long. We can accept eight, but it's a minimum of 10, keep remembering that. It's like, okay, okay.
So it's, it's, it's more than just drawing a line in the dirt saying there's where we're at.
Yeah, yeah. And we spent a lot of time walking that and talking, I mean, we spent a half a day, actually, walking around, and I was getting very hungry because I missed it.
You notice I had a meeting, so I had to go. I got breakfast. Okay, well, hey, you'll be, you'll be in that meeting tomorrow on that.
Yes.
Okay. Park Board, Chase?
Yes, Park Board to meet on the 13th at 6:00 p.m. First thing on my list I have is, I believe it's Ashley Gibbons. She's doing yoga in the park, so she requests-
Is that like Yoga Bear?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yoga in the park, it's free to the public, and so she requested that the Park Board approved that for her, and that will be on Saturdays from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. through the summer, actually until September. So if you feel, feel like that's something that you want to do, that's at your disposal.
And that was in conflict with the young lady who came here to get home?
I think it was the same one, same person.
Oh, same group?
Yeah, same group. I think there's two ladies there, they're certified yoga instructors, and so, yeah, pick up that one.
Okay.
I was told there was 20 people last Saturday.
Wow.
Yeah.
You did, you ought to have reported on that, didn't you?
They're doing three, now that, they're doing three different places in town, so that's really nice, yeah.
Oh, they are, or the other two?
Well, one is out at the Lily Pad, they're doing the Lily, they're out there on the patio, on the deck of the Lily Pad. And-
You know where she's talking, right? Boutique?
The new boutique, and they're doing the groupies on the patio. Absolutely, so.
Okay.
I can't plug it in.
I don't see why you couldn't.
Well, you know, you're supposed to have a beer and yoga, and I want you to know that the people last night-
Sounds like it's a little cocktail and-
Yeah, yeah, they were having fun. I think a couple was a little bit, they're on their second beer. It was fun.
Does it make you more flexible, is that?
I think it did, I think it did, yes, yes. It, it, it was fun.
What else, Chase? And then we heard from Hector Fernandez, wanted to discuss Row 2 Recovery 2, that would be held on Saturday, October 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And this is a free event to raise awareness and support for recovery in Fulton County. The event will have, include fun walk-around-the-park, friendly games of softball, cardio drumming, face painting, yoga, and a barbecue. And this is, again, a free event, anyone that wants to come out is totally welcome, and the Park Board approved for that to occur. I believe that they secured the softball field and large pavilion, pavilion as well to play some games. So is there somebody else? That is October 1st, 8 to 2.
That's in lieu of what they did last year with the, they had to run to town?
Yes, yes, correct. Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
And then to elaborate on the pool, the kiddie pool is currently closed, that looks like it might need a new liner, but they also talked about possibly a non-stick pad or whatever as well, depending on that. Still looking at options there.
Yeah, you've heard us talk a couple of different times, we've had some evaluations of the pool. We continue to work through things as, as we can, but it beats, beats some things. Thank goodness the, with the kiddie pool being down, we've got this splash pad going down, it's crazy. Very good things.
Also for Mantle Mountain, they were able to add in the new water fountain, so it's installed, and also included some, replaced some sidewalk that had been cracked as well there. Had some vandalism at J.C. Park and Fensler Park that has been fixed since then. Appears they continue to tear down, then netting at the basketball courts, and then damaging some picnic tables, those kind of things. Those have been repaired. We don't have any cameras at J.C. or Fensler, I felt like maybe that was something we could maybe look at, I don't know.
Yeah, we've talked about that, and, yeah, it's something we probably are going to have to invest in. I, Black Marvin's here tonight, because he and I have had discussions on this, but we continually have vandalism. We've had sinks torn off of bathroom walls. Now, you can't put cameras inside the bathrooms. I would implore anybody watching out there who spends any time in our parks, if you see something and it doesn't look like it's kosher, pick the phone up and call, call the police. Can't be everywhere all the time, and, but there's this, there's this distracting nature that permeates our society today. And these are all nice things, I mean, we just had the basketball courts done by Leslie Coby. They look really nice. If you haven't seen them out there, they really look good. You know, if you got a tarantula, just, if you see something, just give us a call. We'll respond. What would you?
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Oh, nothing else, bud? That sounded good. They've been having some issues at the beach, that bathroom there with getting sand in the pee traps. So they're possibly looking at maybe adding a shower, outdoor shower there and at least wash off so they're not doing it inside the bathroom. Help with that. And then we talked about the splash pads. That was it for me.
Any questions for Chase? Thank you, sir. And thank you for your, your, your text to, which one? I appreciate that.
No problem.
Okay, Rochester, BCA, Council on Aging, Council on Smith.
BCA met last week. There was one thing on the agenda that went fairly routine. And Council on Aging met yesterday. Just beginning to digest the information, the biggest part of the meeting, we had a report from Transpo, kind of a last year look at the activity and how we rate in the areas, the most common eleven counties to Fulton County. This, this isn't just a region, it's the most similar to us. And Rochester, Fulton County doing a very nice job. We are in the lowest, well, we're the third lowest out of the eleven in our cost operating expense per trip, which I think is speaks well for us. We still are operating not on our full hours. We're open from seven AM to five PM. There is a lot of discussion about opening that up both, on both ends by an hour. But we, average trip per capita is point seven seven percent. So it's almost, it's close to one percent of our capita is writing at some point. That is third. Cass County is way ahead of everybody. They average three point two nine trips, but they're open two more hours a day than we are. And their trips are generally shorter. They take more people to work and pick them up. So we, we rate pretty well as far as the expenses go. Right now averaging about a hundred trips a day. And ridership in twenty twenty was twelve thousand five hundred ninety-seven trips. Last year in twenty twenty-one, it was fifteen thousand eight hundred and eighteen trips. And we are on pace to break twenty twenty-one at a pretty good margin. So we have twelve vehicles on the road every day and things are going well as we continue to get back to full speed both at the center and with Transpo.
How's the gas situation affected the property?
It's affected everybody.
Sure.
It's just, the average cost per trip has just gone up right now. We're not talking about raising rates or anything to try to compensate.
I was asked at one of the events this last week, the Teachers Retirement Lunch, and how it's affected the city. And as you know, we negotiated a negotiated contract price. So we're pretty good until December. Sure, we will be addressing some things then we won't be getting that.
Guess what? That'll be on your topic of discussion for July twelfth.
I'm sure it will be, yeah.
And Transpo does appreciate the value of a negotiated contract to the county as well.
Okay. Well, those who don't have a contract right now are in real deep trouble, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Okay. Any questions for Marty? Thanks, Marty. Odd Solid Waste and Animal Adoption Center.
Both of those groups have opted to meet every other month. Okay. Did not meet this month, so I'll have a report next month.
Okay, okay, very good. Waterboard, John?
Well, everything's running fine. And again, if you had been going down and looked where the house was that they tore down and reeded, I just was nosey and took a drive by today. I did down there where they were just finishing up. And so I drove by today and I mean, the grass is coming up. It really, it really looks nice. We've got a nice, nice space there. It looks good. Makes our building a little bit more visible and a lot more visible. Other than that, Mayor, you covered the other things that were of any importance earlier. And so that's about it.
Thank you. Derek's on vacation.
No, believe it or not, no. No, he's on vacation.
I'm sorry, yes, he is.
He is on vacation.
Is he? He went over the other?
He has a six-thirty flight tomorrow morning.
Oh, okay. Okay, good, brilliant, good, brilliant.
A lot of vacation time.
Oh, my goodness.
He's been around a long time. Any questions for John? Thanks, John. Andy, any legal issues we need to be talking about?
I don't think so.
Okay. ADA concerns, Shota?
None that have been brought to my attention.
Okay. With that, I would certainly entertain a motion to a mayor.
So move in second?
Move in second. Those in favor, word. Sure. Thank you. Thank you all.